Good evening, everyone. We'll call a meeting to order. Joy, would you please call the roll?
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hamis?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Thank you. Counsel, before we move into our meeting, I just want to formally introduce Mike Harmon to everyone and welcome him aboard. Mike's been started about a week ago, our new city administrator, native of Fairfield. We're very excited to have you aboard, Mike, and look forward to everything we'll be doing together.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks. We'll move on to our consent agenda. Before we do that, are there any changes? If not, we'll just go ahead. Consent agenda, we've approved the minutes from the February 9th meeting, approval of liquor license for Mike and Nikki's Revelations Cafe and the American Inn, and claims approval in the amount of $138,286.09. Entertaining motion to approve the consent agenda.
Some of them.
Moved by Hamis.
Second.
Seconded by Hamilton. Please call the roll.
Hamis?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Thank you. Next counsel in our public appearances, we have residents in the neighborhood of 804 East Burlington Avenue. Counsel, you'll recall that this is a home that was purchased by TenCo, and they had a use plan for it that was basically struck down at the Board of Adjustment, and apparently there has been some activity in the house. Our city attorney, John Morrissey, will be reporting on that, but is there -- I don't know that we need to hear from every representative, but there is a representative of the neighborhood that would like to speak to the issue? Yes.
Good evening. I'm Marshawn Roth, and I live at 201 South Maple, and I have a concern about the total disregard of the Board of Adjustment's ruling of October 23rd. The ruling of the Board denied the TenCo request. I believe that the welfare of the neighbors and the neighborhood were well-served at that time. However, TenCo has moved transit into the house at 804 East Burlington. This bait and switch should not stand. The end result is a blatant disregard of the ruling. They got turned down for the crisis house, so now they're calling it something else, and do what they wanted anyway. All the concerns posted at the adjustments hearing are still present: parking, traffic, 50-foot setback, handicap accessibility, and shared drives. All are still present concerns. The safety and well-being of the neighbors are being thumbed back at us. The residents have been disrespectful of neighbors. Aggressive behavior has been shown. There have been ambulance calls within the first 10 days that they were there. The safety and well-being of the neighborhood is being marginalized by TenCo in a direct opposition to the intent of the Board ruling. The house next door again lost another buyer because of the action of the residents. Property values are dropping, and again, this bait and switch is not right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. I know there was a pretty serious incident. Chief, would you be able to report on what had actually happened to one of the residents that was involved in the home?
Um...
I'm putting you on the spot here, but...
I was a little prepared.
Okay.
We had two calls there. One was, without naming names, a subject that was possibly suicidal and threatening to cut themselves. The second was somebody that cut themselves and ended up at one of our local convenience stores in the restroom. Officers transported both to the hospital without incident, sir.
Okay. Thank you, because I know there was a fairly serious incident that brought this to our attention. John, would you be able to report on conversations with TenCo's attorney and why they've ignored the ruling of the Board of Adjustment?
I had our city code inspector and our city administrator with me when we called Attorney Gary Jones for TenCo. TenCo's position is they're not violating the ruling of the Board of Adjustment, that they're entitled to make other indifferent uses, that the other indifferent uses are different than a crisis house. And we've explained to them, well, it doesn't seem that way, that you had two emergency instances over there with a resident that we understand was released from Iowa City four days previous to the two EMT incidents, and had been suicidal, and that was the reason for being in Iowa City, and exhibited the same kinds of conduct twice in two days here. The attorney said he was looking into that. Mr. Wright, the director of TenCo, apparently has been in the hospital for a couple of weeks and wasn't able to respond. He said he would get us a respond this week. As far as what I have to say about the circumstances over there, under our rental housing code, our policy is we're non-discriminatory. The status of people who rent throughout this community is something that the council tries to be aware of, the code inspection officer tries to be aware of, our public safety people try to be aware of, but I can assure you, if you check the logs at the health center, you'll find that in neighborhoods all over town, you occasionally have someone who is hospitalized or transported by ambulance who has had either a mental health issue, a medication issue, an acting-out issue, a stress-related issue. Those are all things that we don't have the capacity as a city either to monitor because of the Health Information Privacy Act, HIPAA, or to basically tell landlords that they can't rent the people that are challenged or that are troubled mentally. A substantial part of our population has some mental health issue, and that's always out there to contend with regardless of the neighborhood. So the posture that TenCo takes on this and our posture as far as discrimination are supposed to be the same. We're a public governmental entity. We have to abide by non-discriminatory standards as far as the way we administer what we're doing, including our rental housing code. Back you up a few or three weeks, let's take it two or three months back first. We had the ruling, many of you were here for the Board of Adjustment hearing, there were about 10 or 12 defined reasons why the Board of Adjustment felt this couldn't qualify as a crisis house in your zoned R2 neighborhood. That information was reduced to a written determination. We provided substantial detail in that to show that we weren't making a finding on the basis of either "not in my backyard" standards or "those people" standards. There's no room in the law or city regulation for either of those standards. We told you that then, and we're telling you that now. That is discrimination, and we are the entity that will be sued if this matter were taken under the Fair Housing Act into federal court. So the council knows its role as far as being a neutral in discrimination matters, but that doesn't mean that we don't have an enforceable city rental code ordinance. The rental code requires that if they convert the use, which since they've had the written determination and they've had the opportunity to appeal and didn't, we go forward on that. For the 90 days that they initiate a conversion and what they say their use is going to be, they have the right to come in. Our code enforcement office will allow them to register without a fee or penalty, and they register as a rental housing. That rental housing unit allows them to take in anybody that's a reasonable tenant. They can have two or three tenants in that building if that building can accommodate them in a practical manner. However, it still requires another step, and that is that once you register it and you say what it's going to be used for, you also submit to an inspection. And we have an ordinance that says all rental housing in Fairfield must be inspected.
John, can I interrupt you just a second?
Yes.
But in that area, it's not zoned for multifamily or for apartments?
It's not zoned for multifamily. That's correct. They could have a couple of tenants in there, and it could still be viewed as a single-family dwelling with somebody claiming to be the primary occupant, and then they could have a tenant or two similar to what we have for duplex use in other R2 neighborhoods around town. So they can get their part way. I have to say they can get their part way, but the rest of the story is they can't not be inspected. They can't thumb their nose at us and say, "Your ordinance doesn't count because we're special." That's sort of what they've said to us, though. We've actually dealt with this two or three weeks ago and had an exchange back and forth with them by email and phone about, "You still have to register if you're going to convert use. You have to tell us what you're doing. We have to have an opportunity to inspect. We have to have some form of inspection showing that you did it, and we have to make sure that you're not scurrying us in the backdoor approach that Marshawn is talking about."
John, are they actually renting? Are those residents being placed there? And who is paying the rent?
And who's the resident there?
All right. I don't know the answer to your questions because we haven't got anything specific from TenCo yet.
Okay.
We've asked them that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So essentially what...
And we've told them, if they don't do something within the 90-day period that they're supposed to, they will both be sent a bill for what they're supposed to be doing, and they'll be sent a citation for what they haven't been doing to comply at a minimum. We still may not know the answer, but we'll get the answer if they don't cooperate at all in front of a magistrate. And I don't want it to come to that. I want them to answer and comply. The last time after we communicated a few times by letter with them, they came in, filled out our forms, submitted to our hearing, went through the hearing process, and so forth. If they do that, and they tell us what's going on and so forth, at least we'll have a basis for saying, "You are coming in the backdoor," or "You're not doing what you're prohibited," or "You're doing what you're prohibited from doing." We don't have that information yet. If they don't cooperate within the terms of our code, we'll be into March sometime before they have to do that, but we'll also be in March. And we've had a meeting between the administrator, our code inspection officer, and myself about what will be filed. So we have the ability to file a civil infraction to make them do some certain things. We have the ability to file a citation that's a misdemeanor, plus we have the right to bill for their failure to register. Those are things that just come out of the rental housing code. They have, if they take the position that they are exempt because their residents are going to fall under the Fair Housing Act, they can take that position, but my opinion is the Fair Housing Act doesn't exempt them from reasonable policing regulations in a municipality. And that's our inspection code, and that's our registration of rental, and that's having us involved even if it means having to use those devices that I described to get the information. It may be at that point that they do show us that they fit an exemption. I don't have control over that. They can be exempt from inspection if they're doing an inspection through Area 15 housing. We have several places in the community with handicapped individuals that are exempted from our city inspection because they're inspected by HUD, a Section 8 subsidy rent inspector, a 202 section housing inspector, or some other type of subsidized rent inspection that's sanctioned by the federal government.
John?
Yeah.
I think, I don't think our power to inspect is going to satisfy the neighborhood.
No. No, but it's going to get us information.
It is going to get us information. You know, I guess my question is, you know, splitting the hairs about the definition of the house, because obviously, you know, there was an over two-and-a-half-hour hearing
Right.
that the Board of Adjustment had, and the neighbors, you know, very articulately expressed their concerns. And that vote was taken based on the nature of that activity in the home.
Board of Adjustment was very clear that this can't be a crisis house.
And if it can't be proven that this new definition is substantially different from what they basically declined to service in that regard, I think we have to stand behind that. I think that's where this really falls, is whether they can substantially determine that this is not a crisis house.
Yeah. The other parts of the Board of Adjustment finding were they went farther than it being a crisis house. They said it's also not a boarding house. It's also not a lodging house, which were other things that were discussed by TenCo when they were here with us. So we have other things that have also been determined. Whatever they do, if they come in and register, they have to characterize their use in some way. If they say they're only going to have a primary occupant and a tenant, that would fit with R2, but if there's other people being seen living there every day, that's not the truth. And so far, we can't accuse them of not telling us the truth because they haven't told us anything, but that's coming. The other thing, under what we call a civil infraction, and this is not what usually gets filed by Scott, it's something that I would work with Scott, and we would file, we have the ability to have our local court enjoin them from doing what they are prohibited under our determination. At that point, I think it will hit the fan, and we'll see if they're really going to take us up on being discriminatory.
Okay.
Our position will be completely consistent with the ruling and with our non-discriminatory administration of our rental code. So that's the posture the city will take. We will do our due diligence as far as watching it, if they don't hit those dates that they have to, as far as registering, allowing inspection, or showing us how they're exempted from the inspection part, giving us the information we request in the course of showing or they're claiming an exemption. One way or the other, they can't not tell us what's going on. They have to fill the box. If they don't do anything, we have no choice.
Okay.
We will act.
Well, thanks, John. Do we think in the next two weeks, we might have another report on this?
We were told by their attorney, he would try to get us an answer in the next few days.
Okay.
Our outside deadline on this, as far as filing things, will probably be later on in March. We may be reporting to you about this at the next council meeting, and maybe even at the second council meeting in March before we have the information we want, but we'll know what we're going to do at that point.
Okay.
We understand.
Thank you, John. Appreciate that. I just want to also mention, counsel, do you have any questions or any comments?
I kind of just wanted to clarify with John, if I may. The residence is zoned as R2, right?
That's correct.
Which means that they could have a two-family unit in there, right?
Right.
Two separate apartments in there if they want.
Right.
They could convert the place from a single-family to a two-family dwelling if they wanted. They haven't done that, we presume, but we're not sure. But I'm just trying to think legally, you know, what they can do. I'm not, I'm not, I'm just trying to give a real expectation for myself and maybe the neighbors. As you said, right now, you know, as a homeowner, they can rent out their home, and they can have some unrelated tenants in it even though it's R1.
Right.
And it's kind of, it's a gray area of how many unrelated tenants? I know in a college community, you know, there's, it's often, you know, overlooked to how many unrelated tenants might be together in one place, but...
If it's a husband and wife or something like that, and they're a rental apartment, that's going to be two unrelated tenants.
Yeah.
Or it's going to be two related tenants.
I think that's, the thing is, you know, the definition, John, of the crisis house was for people, there was going to be a lot of turnover.
Yeah.
These are people who are in for 10 days, a week, two weeks, something like that, and that was the nature of what was really disqualifying and turned down. These aren't, these aren't even semi-permanent people.
Long-term tenants.
So I think, you know, obviously, they're trying to redefine it in some way, but if it's not substantially redefined from that activity, then that ruling has already been made.
All right. When we talked to their attorney, he said, "This is no longer a crisis house managed situation. It's not short-term. These would be long-term tenants, and they would be tenants that you could expect to find in other areas of town under leases." That was his posture. We don't know anything specific as far as a lease or as far as what he means by long-term, so that'll come, but if it's that arrangement, we do know TenCo has a couple of other houses in the community where they do have persons that are challenged, but they live under leases long-term.
Well, and we understand that, and that came out very clearly in the public hearing also, and I think that the residents came across very strongly that they believe that this type of housing is important within a community. Everybody understands that they picked the wrong neighborhood for a host of reasons and the property itself, so we'll wait for your report, John, once we've had further discussion with the attorney.
We don't have anything in our city code defining a crisis house. So we do have a body of definitions under the federal code as far as what a crisis house is, and right now, what we've heard so far from the one TenCo contact, they did give us some information, and did you talk to Cody? Was that there was a person monitoring inside the house for the tenant that went out with the ambulance two days ago.
We went over this, and the tenants were lucky to find the front door. That's what kind of people are over there.
How many people were in, lived there?
Two of them found the front door.
Okay. It'll be interesting. I think it'll also be interesting to see if those same people are there in a month.
Their next night, their next day, when they tried to suicide.
But the thing is, if they're, if they are not there in a month, then that goes against what they're talking about in terms of long-term residences, and we want to confirm that.
Called a rental property. Your hands are tied, but proving it's a rental property, do they have to show you paperwork or just called a rental property?
No, they have to go through the procedures we prescribe. We have to afford them due process as far as the amount of time our ordinance says and so forth.
Right.
But they have to answer at some point.
Yeah, but what's called a rental property? Do they have to show you somebody's payin'? Who?
We define rental properties as somebody pays rent either by themselves or for them.
Right.
And if they're getting subsidy for the person living there, that's still a form of rent.
Right, but you've got us...
That'd be the same standard in our very multi Logan, Calhoun, Wagon Wheel.
But there's got to be some change of funds somewhere.
Yeah.
And we want that documented, too, who's paying and who's actually renting. So, John, thanks for your report, and counsel, we'll hear back from them. Next counsel will move on to a report from, is Chris here? Chris Smith? There you are. Come on up, Chris, from Carley Nelson. And as you're probably aware, the bid opening took place just over a week ago. Very favorable. Chris is going to report on that, and we have some work to do to award some of the contracts so that the project can move forward as quickly as possible.
Yep.
Chris? Welcome.
February 12th, we did receive bids for the 12 bid packages that went out. That will be the entire scope of work, the construction process. Bids did come in favorably. We'll get into some of the detail here in a moment, but they did come in under budget overall. Then the task force committee met on the following Tuesday, February 17th, and went through all the bids. We talked about the alternates, and they formed a recommendation for you guys to consider tonight. There were seven alternates that came out with the bids. Alternate number one was to add the glass clear-story windows along the north and south walls.
Chris, while you're going through that, why don't we talk numbers? Just go over that low bid and budget, and just go over everything so that we can see.
Sure.
Yeah. The low bid total.
Okay. Bid package number one was the site work and site utilities package. DeLong Construction was the low bid on that, $289,210. We had a budget price of 200, just under $238,000 that worked. Bid package number two was the paving. Mike Nelson Concrete was low on that package with a bid of $77,527. We had a budget of $94,910.
Now, I have to go back, all the way back to savings.
Want me to give you a moment?
No, no, it's fine.
Okay. Bid package three was concrete foundation and floors. Had a low bid of $349,800. We had a budget of $383,600 on that work. Pre-engineered metal building was bid package number four. Schaus Voorhees was a low bidder on that, $904,500. We had a cost estimate of $1,066,000. Bid package number five is the roofing and sheet metal. This would be the roofing over the lobby area of the building. Brockway had a low bid of $85,450. Our budget was $52,346. Bid package number six and seven, we had those separated out, but Schaus Voorhees turned in a combined bid for each, for both bid packages combined. Their bid was $505,500. Our budget was, I didn't add them up here, but 400, well, right at $500,000 was the budget for them. Bid package number eight is the athletic flooring. Low bid came in, it was Connor Sports Flooring, $188,000. Our cost estimate was $281,000. The athletic equipment, Iowa, had a, the low bidder was Iowa Direct Equipment, a low bid of $85,700. Our cost estimate was $121,571. Bid package number 10, the fire sprinkler, low bidder was Blackhawk Automatic Sprinklers with a bid of $56,900. Our cost estimate was $77,770. Bid package number 11 is the plumbing and HVAC. Brockway Mechanical was low bidder on that as well.
I'm sorry.
Their bid was $487,542. Our cost estimate was $462,187. And the last bid package, number 12, the electrical, All-Pro Electric, had the low bid, $328,000. Our cost estimate was $337,547. So overall, the, for these bid packages, the low bids add up to $3358,516, and our cost estimate was $3,612,345. So overall, the base bid is $253,829 under the cost estimate. Any questions on the base bids? If not, I'll touch on the alternates here.
Go ahead, Chris.
Alternate number one was the translucent glazing panels. That's clear-story windows on the north wall and the south wall, running the entire length of the building. Alternate number one came in at $95,400. Alternate number two was changing the flooring at the infield of the track from the, what we call a pad and pour type floor to an interlocking tile type flooring. And we did have some bids on that. There was actually a minor savings, only, I think, $3,000. There was actually a minor savings, only, I think, $3,000. These individual low bidders that were low on the main base bid, they did not bid that alternate number two. Really, the intent with that alternate was only to have a mechanism in place to reduce our costs if the bids came in over budget. Alternate number three is to remove and replace existing roofing at the pool lobby. This would be that shorter height structure on the north side of the outdoor, or the indoor pool, I'm sorry, $30,820. Alternate number four is to put a new glass front on the southernmost racquetball court. So, the middle racquetball court is going to be kept in place, and it's got a glass front. The south racquetball court just has a real small window in it. And there was some interest in opening that up, you know, to make it a lot more visible to the, well, you're going to be able to see it from the exterior, but maybe more attractive was just to make that lobby feel nice and open and see that activity taking place inside the racquetball court. And then alternate number five was adding an additional batting cage in the rec center itself. The base bid had one batting cage that drops down from the roof structure. Alternate number five would add a second batting cage. Alternate number six is to add seating, sod, some rock and wood mulch planting beds to the project. The base bid had no final seating, sod, et cetera. This alternate does not include any trees or shrubs or plantings of any type. Alternate number six, $24,930. And then alternate number seven is to replace the lighting in the existing racquetball courts with new LED fixtures that would somewhat match the rest of the facility. That's the alternates.
And your total on that, Chris?
Yeah, the total of all the alternates is $177,550. So, if all the alternates were taken and the bids would have came in, $73,000 over budget plus or under budget, I'm sorry. The alternates, again, were discussed with the task force committee. And alternate number two, again, was a decrease in the flooring, really only in place as a mechanism for bids came in over budget. So, I think that one would be a, probably a no-brainer not to accept that one. And then alternate number four, that's the glass front on the racquetball court. They kind of went back and forth on that one, and, you know, one aspect is to make that court more open to the lobby and so that people can see activity taking place. There was some concern about some of the racquetball players, maybe not, one, they would perhaps want some more privacy while they're playing the sport and be less viewable from the public sitting in the lobby. So, their recommendation was to not replace the south racquetball court with the glass front, just from the privacy standpoint.
But there may be some upgrades to that front wall, just not glass.
Yeah, certainly try and improve the aesthetics.
So, that figure is going to stay in the alternates to determine what that's going to be?
Yeah, I think we can certainly improve the aesthetics of that southern court without spending that much money, but do something.
Okay. Thanks, Chris. So, now, the recommendation that's coming from the task force is to include all of the alternates in the bid. And then there was also further discussion about a couple of other elements, and I don't know whether Derek, you wanted to present some of the things that you were hoping we could also include. And then also, the discussion about the overhead hoops, the additional cross-court hoops. While Derek's coming up, also, yeah, go ahead, Derek. I'll also mention, Chris, the figure that you have built into this budget already for contingency is about $250,000.
It's, that amount's been updated. It's 5% of the construction cost is what it is. So, when the bids came in under budget, that contingency dropped proportionally. So, I have included an overall project budget in this board packet, or this council packet here, and it's $205,000 is the current figure for the contingency that will cover change orders during construction.
But does not include any excess from what you're describing here, even including the bid alternates?
That's correct.
So, that would grow.
We're currently carrying that as kind of a second contingency that we're calling the under-budget contingency.
Yeah, I think there was only two other considerations that I can remember unless I'm forgetting something. One was with the outdoor pool. I thought it was, this is before I knew how the bids came in, I thought it was more important to have the umbrella shade structures in that project before the benches. We pulled those benches out. I'd like to put those benches back into the budget. That was about $8,000. And then the second thing was talking to the task force previously before we're going through where the numbers were. We originally had in there adding, having, I think it's six hoops on our middle and farthest west court. But going through the numbers in the beginning stages, we thought, well, we could get by with having four hoops on each of those courts. But since the bids came in so favorably, we'd like to add those hoops back in those courts. That would really be good for our youth programming. We don't know the cost. I think Chris and Newman-Monson are taking a look at the prices on those, on how much that'll cost, so.
Yeah, the only other one that came up was...
Sorry, that a piece of equipment?
Yeah. The other one that came up was, there was the concession building that was added to the outdoor pool project, but I think currently, or prior to now, there's been no budget for the equipment to outfit that concession area. So, this is a little bit out of our scope of the project. It's on the pool side, but I think you were wanting to perhaps get some pricing on equipment.
Get pricing on equipment. I was thinking around $10,000, $15,000 in that line item.
What kind of equipment?
Well, we're going to have a concession stand to make, I don't know, hot dogs or pizza.
Cooking equipment?
Yeah. Right now, we don't have it furnished, so.
Okay, very good. Counsel, any questions for Chris on the bids? So, the other item we want to talk about, Chris, you and I and Mike discussed this, and that was the change order process. Because as you described to me, we have 12 different contracts here, and we're going to likely face, you know, a fair amount of change orders which are going to come out of the contingency budget that has been set aside. But that process can be cumbersome if you're coming here every two weeks with a list of change orders for all of us in all of those different areas. So, let's talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, so the, I mean, the nice part about what we're doing here is it reduces the cost because we're breaking the project down into 12 individual bid packages. So, you're avoiding the one general contractor that, in essence, marks up all those 12 packages. So, we're reducing the cost. What that's doing is forcing 12 individual contracts between the city and these contractors. So, every time there's a cost issue that comes up with any of those contracts, it's just, it's going to increase the number of change orders here because there's 12 contracts instead of one. It's not going to increase the dollar amount, but it's going to increase the sheer number of change orders. So, what we'd recommend is that somebody from the city has the authority to approve change orders, you know, perhaps up to a certain dollar amount, perhaps up to within the contingency amount of the project. But that way, we'll avoid delays in the construction process. Some changes are going to be time-sensitive where, you know, it's going to put the project on hold if we got to wait a couple of weeks or perhaps a month to get a change order approved. So, the way we typically see it is, you know, this administrator or somebody on the council, whoever it may be, has the authority to approve change orders up to, we typically see in the $10,000, $15,000 range, somewhere in that vicinity, so.
And give us an example of what you might come up against.
Well, you know, there's several categories of change orders. One will be unforeseen conditions, which we could have in the site. We could dig up something underground. I know there's been some demolition on the site, and the foundations backfill, you know, perhaps not well-compacted with remodeling and inside existing buildings. You always uncover unknown, unforeseen conditions. There's going to be design errors and omissions, things that perhaps the design team should have had in the documents that they didn't. And there may be something that is in the documents, but we didn't get it defined in our bid package scopes of work. So, really those, and then the fifth one is owner-driven changes. If Derek or you guys want to change something on the project, that's going to result in a change order. So, that's the types of things that'll come up.
And Chris, your company is really our first line of defense for those things. You're going, they're going, contractors are going to come to you first, and you're going to determine whether, you're going to interpret whether that was something that should be included in their bid packet or not. If, and you'll make a recommendation based on whether you think it is something outside of that and whether it is important to the project.
Yeah, that's right. We'll receive the change order requests. We'll evaluate them to see whether, A, it's a legitimate change order issue. We'll evaluate the price and to make sure it's fair. And if it is both of those, then we'll come to that individual and say, "We think this is legitimate change order issue, and we recommend that it be considered," so.
Okay. And your, excuse me, your service for doing this already budgeted in the project?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, up until this point, you know, really what we've been doing is what we call pre-construction services. From this point forward, deconstruction services.
Chris, talk a little bit about the timeline based on approval this evening.
So, we've got, we've actually got contracts drafted that are ready to be sent out upon your guys' approval. If we receive the approval tonight, we can get those sent out tomorrow. That'll start the, what we call the submittal process, where people start turning in their own detailed shop drawings to consist of the work. And our game plan would be to get the submittal process done right now, get the upfront planning done right now, so that come springtime, construction can hit the ground running. The basketball hoops is going to be a decision that we'll need to, whether or not we add additional cross-court hoops. That'll have to be something we know fairly quickly here because that's going to dictate foundations and the building design and the equipment, so. And Newman-Monson is looking into the possibilities of doing that, what ramifications that does have in design, so.
Okay. But if we already have bids for all these things, I mean, would that change?
That would be an example of a change order. An owner-directed change order that we're changing the scope of the project, so it will yield a change order.
And so, but all those changes are kind of included in what we, you didn't actually have a budget on that, an amount?
That's correct.
But, so that amount will include all those change orders that it'll generate?
Yeah, there's a contingency kind of in the bottom line of the budget or the cost for the entire project, the pool and the gym, and something like that would be pulled out of that contingency fund.
And I would suggest, I would suggest that come back to the council for a report on those overhead baskets to see, you know, what it would add, what it would do from the design standpoint, and probably don't need to have a separate task force meeting about that, but invite task force members here to hear it all at the same time so that we can, we can make a decision on that.
Right, because what we've been told to this point right now is that they would just cost $8,000 for that piece of equipment.
Yeah, exactly.
It doesn't include any of the other costs for having to beef up any structural items in order to have them there or any foundation that would go underneath them, so.
Well, one of the issues, one of the issues is that there's already some overhead things in there, ductwork and things, so if that has to be moved or changed in some way. So, those, all of those things, if that, if that could come back to us before, and we would, would not approve that tonight, but approve all of the other alternates that were spelled out earlier.
So, Ed, are we looking to form a policy for the change orders tonight?
Yeah, we'll, we'll take the approval first, and then we'll talk about a policy for change orders. So, entertain a motion, make a motion to approve the...
Alternates one, three, five, six, and seven, move to approve those alternates?
Along with the low bid, along with the...
Oh, and the low bids on all the 12, yes, all the 12 bids.
Motion by Hallie to approve.
Second.
Second by Revolinsky. Any other discussion? So happy that these bids came in and we're not having a different type of discussion, so.
We're fortunate.
Good work on that. We really, really appreciate all around, everybody. Please call the roll.
Hallie?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Budget Kalin?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then, counsel, some, in discussion on how we would like to deal with the change orders, Mike is in a position, I think, to work closely with the team and evaluate those change orders as they come in. Is there an amount that we would feel comfortable with authorizing up to amount?
What does Mike suggest? Mike, what do you say?
Chris.
Chris, I'm sorry.
Chris, it said between $10,000 and $15,000.
$10,000?
Well, $10,000 to $15,000 is kind of the range we normally see.
Overall, I mean, we have, we have 5% set aside for contingency, so you're saying for each, I mean...
Each individual change order. If that individual change order is less than that $10,000 to $15,000, then that individual can approve that change order.
I would make a motion that Mike can approve change orders $10,000 or under, up to that contingency amount without council approval.
Move by Ledger.
Reporting.
Move by Ledger Kalin, second by Flornoy. Any other questions? Chris, one question I had on that, for instance, you know, when we're tying these change orders to contingencies, if it comes in the electrical area, are you going to look at that electrical budget and determine whether that's over 5% of what would be a contingency in that area?
No, from this, from this point forward...
It's just a big pot.
Yeah, exactly. And really, that's, that's the way the whole cost estimate was, is it's, yes, we did an estimate in each individual bid package, but really, we need to think about it as one project at this point.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Budget Kalin?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Great. Thank you, Chris. Appreciate your report.
One thing I should have said a minute ago was, does Derek then have the approval to proceed with this concession equipment? I put it in overall budget here at this point that's in front here.
It is in the overall budget?
It is, yeah.
Then it's just been approved. I guess that's...
Well, it wasn't as part of the...
No, it wasn't as part of the...
Not a part of an alternate, right?
No, it wasn't the bid.
The last, the last sheet in your packet there is the overall project cost estimate. That's for the pool and for the gym.
That has not been approved tonight.
So, I don't, I don't know.
Let's take, let's take, let's take a separate motion on, because these would be owner-directed, and they are above $10,000, so let's take, take a separate motion on Derek's request.
Well, can Chris just tell us exactly what you put in the budget? Did you put the benches back in?
I see number 16 is the benches, but...
Yeah, I was just looking at that. I may have misspoke. The benches are in there, the concession equipment is not.
Yeah, yeah.
Do we have to decide on that this evening?
I don't think so.
Probably not.
I don't know if you want, do you have enough information? You can get pricing on that and then maybe present that to the next council meeting.
Yeah, I think that's better.
Yeah, let's do that. They don't need to be ordered anytime soon. Okay, thank you, Chris. Appreciate, appreciate your report.
So, is the timeline still to December?
Yeah, that's essentially what the contractors bid on, so they were anticipating they will be ready to construct. The other thing I would like to just mention at this point in time, counsel, mention it to Mike and to Derek, is that I would like to see us have bi-monthly reports on both progress of the construction and also any budget items, very brief reports, but if it's going to be just through the remainder of the year, would like to receive some reports on how we're doing. Okay, thank you. Very important projects. Next council, we have a resolution awarding a Third Street sewer project. Melanie, can you report on that for us, please?
I get to talk much smaller numbers on this one. I get to talk much smaller numbers on this one. This is a project that Sean had budgeted within this fiscal year's budget. It's for replacement of a practically 700 feet of sanitary sewer main on Third Street between Polk and Iowa Avenue. The sewer in this area is four and six inch, and Sean's not able to get his camera and his cleaning equipment through there. So this was a quote process done to replace that 700 feet, as well as a couple manholes. The engineer's estimate was 132,000. We received three bids, or three quotes, the low being from Crossiron of Fairfield for 121,569 and 20 cents. Second was from Drish of Fairfield for 153,292 dollars and 70 cents. And the third quote was from Bob Brown of Fairfield for 173,333 dollars and 50 cents. So we would recommend the low quote be awarded to Crossiron.
Thank you, Melanie. Entertained a motion to approve the bid. Move by Ledger Kaelin.
Second.
Second by Hammers. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Next council, we will be setting a public hearing for our 1516 budget, which will be at our next meeting, March 9th at 7:00 PM. So entertain a motion to set a public hearing.
So move.
Move by Revolinsky.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Next council, we have two items, both will be public hearings. One is to, public hearing on a stop box, curb stop, repair, schedule of assessments. So this will be something that would be assessed to a property owner that is in arrears. So entertain a motion to set March 23rd for that public hearing at 7:00 PM.
So move.
Move by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. And next, we'll be setting a public hearing for nuisance abatement, schedule of assessments, again, March 23rd, 7:00 PM.
So move.
Second by Hamilton, second by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thanks. Next council, we're going to take a report from Adam Plegge regarding the sale or lease of 102 South 23rd Street. Adam, do you give us an update on that, that property and what our potential usages are?
Sure. Just have a real brief report for you here this evening. We had triage come in from Mount Pleasant and do an evaluation of the building on mold remediation. They estimated it would be about a two-week process. They would need to remove all of the drywall, the insulation, and the ceiling tiles. They estimate the cost at $35,000. That does not include the north part of the building. There's some drainage issues there that will be, need to be taken care of as well long-term. So there's additional costs there. I'm not sure what those would be. We also went in to the building, Jim Horace, who's going to do the market evaluation for you. We just got the information on mold remediation Saturday, so Jim hasn't had time to finish that yet, but he expects in the next few days, he should have an assessment of what the building's worth for you. Went through the building with Habitat for Humanity and several other interested buyers in it, and just kind of did a general walkthrough. I think you do have a fair amount of interest in the building. Until we get the fair market valuation, we don't really know how serious those potential buyers are at this point.
At this point, Adam, is MRC out?
MRC is not quite out of the building, but they should be by the end of this week, I believe.
Oh, okay.
They're very willing.
I've been getting a lot of calls about, I've got a room full of stuff I've been meaning to bring, but they're done.
You're out of luck. Yeah, sorry. However, the sub-leasur still has a fair amount of stuff in the building, and I'm not sure what his timeline is to get out of it. I think he is an interested party in the building as well, so it's kind of up to the city's discretion if you'd like to see everything removed from the building, but there is quite a bit of stuff still in there.
Okay.
Yeah, so I guess, not sure if there's any action needs to be taken tonight, but as soon as we get the fair market assessment of it, I'll pass that along.
Okay. Thank you, Adam. Appreciate that. Next council, with Mike Harmon coming on, we do want to make two appointments. One would be as our Title IX Coordinator and also our ADA Coordinator for the City of Fairfield.
Title VI, is it?
Is it nine or?
Six.
Six.
It says six.
It's six.
Okay. I wasn't the only one.
Yeah, I wondered why Title IX?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for that correction. So entertain a motion to appoint Mike Harmon as our Title VI Coordinator and also ADA Coordinator.
Move to appoint.
Move by Hammers, second by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Next, an action I'm going to approve for a site review tool. Mike, were you going to report on this?
Melanie will.
Melanie Wilmer? Okay, great.
Your past, your last item, previous item, and this item relate to the information that I provided at the last council meeting regarding a DOT site visit for the Title VI and the ADA. This site review tool is basically a tool. It's, you're not going to be penalized if, one of the sections, you have quite a few no's on the list, and so you're not being penalized for it. It provides a starting point when the DOT does come in April and May to review the city for their Title VI and ADA compliance. So as, as the Title VI and ADA Coordinator, Mike will have a lot of policies to get in place, but that DOT will be allowing some time for that. I do not have a, you know, whether this is a six-month or a two-year process, but we'll be getting all that within the next couple months. What I need is authorization for the mayor and Mike to sign this tool, and then copies of the minutes and the resolutions will get sent to DOT March 2nd to meet the first deadline, and then Mike will take it over from here.
You say that with a smile on your face, Melanie. Okay.
I'll be, I'll be here to help Mike all the way.
So entertain a motion then to approve the site review tool so that we can comply with the DOT's wishes.
So move.
Move by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Next council, we have the first reading of an ordinance for rezoning 106 North Third Street from R3 multifamily residential district to B1 general business district. This is a lot on the north side of Fairfield Lumber that really has been in business use for some time. They were never really approached to, to change that. It's in R3 at this point in time. The company is pursuing sale of the business, and I think felt that it would be best if the entire property were zoned the same way. This is obviously contiguous to the downtown business district. Did come with a recommendation from planning and zoning. This will be our first reading, so entertain as a public hearing, I'll open a public hearing and ask if there's any public comment. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and ask council wishes to pass from the first to second reading.
So move.
Move by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Revolinsky. Please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next council, we have an ordinance in front of us. We discussed this the last time. This is rescinding ordinance 1103 for the rezoning of 809 West Taylor from R2 general residence to R3. This also comes with a recommendation of planning and zoning. This was the former Nelson Nursing Home, and, well, did we write that wrong again? It's R3 to R2.
No, 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 no. It's not written incorrectly. The ordinance, 1103, says that it changes from R2 to R3, and we're rescinding.
Rescinding that, so essentially.
This is written correctly.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, yeah. So essentially, what during, you know, during the six public hearings we had, we did, at one point, make a promise to the residents that if that project did not go through, that it would return to R2. So this is, this is the action.
And this was, this was by request of the current owner to rescind that ordinance, and I would like the indulgence of the council to suspend the rules on this so that we could pass it from the first through the final reading tonight.
Second.
Because we have so much history with it.
So motion to suspend the rules by Hamilton, second by Revolinsky. Any concerns, council?
We haven't had a public hearing about it yet.
Well, true.
Well, I think we can, we can borrow from the six we had earlier. Please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Okay, then I'll entertain.
Now, I would like to move this through the final reading.
Move by Hamilton to prove from the, move from the first to the third and final reading.
But I will second, but mayor, don't, don't we need to have a public hearing before we actually vote on the ordinance?
Yes, yeah, I will, I'll, so just go ahead and second it, and I'll ask if, we'll open a public hearing on the ordinance and ask if there's anyone who wishes to speak for or against. I see two people who might speak for, but I think they kind of like the directions going.
Here we go, we got somebody coming.
Okay. We'll close the public hearing.
Obviously.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
A for or against?
Doesn't matter.
I just want to tell you folks, I'm Fred Rudat. I live at 1004 South Ave. I've spent, I was in the Navy for four years and 17 years as a reserve, and I came here, moved down here in 2003. I'm going to tell you a few little stories here, if I may. Back in 2003, across the street from me was a little redheaded girl, and as years grow, I was told, that's not a girl, that's a boy. There was cars parked hardly any out in the street, but as they grew up, guess what he got? He got a car, and another person got a car. And I've had people say, there's so much traffic on South Ave, but as things go on, there's more people on the street. And so I just wanted to say to Jason Kelly, I'm glad that he is doing something with that, because before, I went on vacation back the 1st of September, and they were discussing about the Blue Zone. So I kept thinking all the time, I hope they don't, they got to do something with Nelson's Nursing Home and not leave it out. And so when I came back, why, I heard that Mr. Kelly was interested in it, you know, and wanted to, I'm glad it's, something's going to happen with it instead of it being tore down. There's people throwing garbage over the fence, and then the deer was in there, and it's, get back in control of the thing. And actually, that building is only 40 years old, and to tear it down, he's going to make something good out of it. So that's all what I got to say, and I think that we're going in the right direction. And I've also, I, I had a real good friend of mine back in 2008, and I get a letter every once in a while, and they want a little money, but the National Officers Memorial Fund, that that money comes to here in Iowa and not to Michigan where I live, though it helps everybody. And keep smiling. I will, even if you give me a ticket.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Well, we're familiar with the fund, and it is a great, very worthy cause, and thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to address?
I was.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing, and we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll, Joy.
I was second.
John.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Council, I have one board appointment to propose, and this is to the Fairfield Arts Convention Center Board. The city has three board members that are appointed. John Olson has moved out of town, and he was serving a three-year term there, and I'd like to recommend Pam Pilten'sgrund to replace John Olson.
What order, Mayor?
Yes.
That's the Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Convention, the CBB. So the appointment for CBB for Pam Pilten'sgrund.
So move.
Move by Revolinsky.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Next, we have our Convention and Visitors Bureau and Report, Russon Lippenkot.
Well, I'm before you, along with my sidekick, Terry Baker, we are the Fairfield Iowa Convention and Visitors Bureau, and every year, we do an annual report that covers our fiscal year, and this reporting period is July 1st of 2013 to June 30th of 2014. I'm, I'm here to tell you that that was a dynamite year for us, fiscal year 2014. One of the main highlights that the community enjoyed was RagBri 41, which, as you all know, was, is Iowa's largest tourism event, and we held an overnight visit, and because of the efforts of Terry Baker, Fairfield can say that we have the Guinness Book of World Records, we are in the Guinness Book of World Records, for 2,268 people wearing false mustaches. So in all of our accolades as a community, I hope that we all can add that one in, right behind maybe the Great Place or Blue Zone, that we hold that record. But on a serious note, tourism is a powerful vehicle for economic development in Fairfield and Jefferson County. It is nearly a $40 million industry in Jefferson County, and it employs 360 people. And those jobs that it supports are lodging, dining, retail, and entertainment sectors. But most importantly, it supports the quality of life enhancements and improved infrastructure, and that's largely through local option sales tax. When visitors come here, they spend, they spend their money. And we recently determined some, some figures from the data that we've been provided, nearly 55% of our visitors that are coming to Fairfield are coming for leisure purposes. You know, obviously, when businesses do, when businesses have their clients or customers come in, you know, that's, that's the corporate travel, but the leisure travel really, really speaks to what Fairfield is. That's people just coming to Fairfield to see, whether it be an art walk or a convention center performance. But that's, that tells you right there that Fairfield is a, is a unique place to visit. You know, if you look at, at what, what, why people come to Fairfield, you know, it's, it's the recreational opportunities, it's the arts and entertainment amenities, but not only is that our driver, but it's also one of the reasons that makes Fairfield a great place to live. I often tell people, in order for Fairfield to be a great place to visit, it needs to be a great place to live. So those two components go hand in hand. But the Convention and Visitors Bureau, we're the official destination management leader for the community and the county. We engage in activities that drive economic development in the areas of leisure, business, We engage in activities that drive economic development in the areas of leisure, business, and group travel that, at the end of the day, recognizes Fairfield as a unique travel destination. Some of the things that we did in this reporting period, we redid TravelFairfield.com. And obviously, if you haven't been to it, I encourage you tomorrow to visit TravelFairfield.com. But it's really the front door for Fairfield, and we like to think that it's attractive in its appearance, and it's also easily navigated. And in 2014, the website received over 22,000 unique visitors. Our Visitor's Guide, which is the copy, there's a picture of it in the bottom left-hand corner of the inside front cover, but we distributed that to 20,000 different copies. And we went with the concept, the marketing, really the messaging of eat, play, and stay. Another thing that we did, and that message went through not only our Visitor's Guide, but also through our various advertising campaigns. One of the things that my sidekick Terry came up with, I have to hand this one to her, the Witches of Fairfield. That was the Sandwiches of Fairfield. So we took, we highlighted 22 sandwiches from 11 different restaurants. And as some of the judges told me, it was a really hard job to be a judge, but somebody had to do it. Another program that we do that I'm very proud of is our grant program. We reinvested $15,000 of marketing and event planning money to 14 different organizations. So really, that funding goes to them to help with the marketing of their event or putting on their event. The last thing I'll tell you is, we work, you know, we work not only with our stakeholders in Fairfield, but we also work with them across the state of Iowa. We're involved in various organizations such as the Eastern Iowa Tourism Region, Iowa Destination Marketing Alliance, and the Travel Federation of Iowa. And the whole idea is to keep Fairfield's voice as prominent as possible so we can continue to attract visitors and also attract available funding. So the last thing I'll tell you is, mark your calendars for the third weekend, or the third... What's the date of the tourism conference?
It's the third week in October.
The third week in October. We've partnered with ATOMWA to host the Iowa Tourism Conference. So the third Thursday of the month, we will have 300 people here, eating in our restaurants as part of what they call a dineround, and seeing our sites, and they'll have an award ceremony in the San Don Theater. So it's a great kudos for Fairfield to host part of that conference. I hope you take a look at reading this annual report, and if there are any questions, I'll take them.
Thank you, Ruston. We're always impressed with all of the activities and certainly with your report. One of the other measurements also, when we began our CBB process, we funded it through our hotel motel tax. We've seen that grow, obviously, so that's a big part of the measurement for...
If you see on the front cover, down in the left-hand corner, it increased most recent, the previous year of 10%. And the figure that I find frankly astonishing is that since 2005, nearly 60% increase in our hotel motel tax. As I tell people, that is really the only strong, you know, true indicator that you can tell to determine how tourism is doing in your community. And that comes from a 7% transient lodging tax that our hotels and bed and breakfast assess on all nights under 30 days. So.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Oh, just one other comment on the tourism. I understand that those are generally held in much bigger cities, the tourism conference, and I think the way that we've been able to package it with ATOMWA is probably one of the best examples of regional economic development that I've seen. So I think it's a great coup to get that here. So let us know if there's anything we need to do to be prepared.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Okay. Thank you, Ruston, appreciate it. Next, we have a report from Ways and Means. John?
I didn't see myself on here. Okay, well...
Well, if there's not a report, that's fine.
I don't really have a report. We've met regarding the budget, and we're going to look at the budget next week. I can say a couple of things about it, if you like. I'm not really prepared to do that here.
We were going to run through the different items so that everyone was kind of aware before, because we were on such a short time period.
Yeah, good idea. And I, you know, and I really didn't prep for this, but we can just go through here. Yeah, we have this sheet here. This isn't the sheet I need, I'm sorry.
No, actually, this is the sheet you need, because it has the tax asking total of all the levies and the 810 per thousand at $17.164.71 cents per thousand, which is down from last year's 17.49, I believe it was, by a little over 33 cents per thousand from what it was a year ago. So Joy has worked very hard on preparing this budget. There were some other line items that we had discussed, but we have decided to take no action on them at this time. And I'm sure that we can get copies of these out to all the council members so that we can review them individually between now and our next council.
I think we'd want a little more information than this to go out to everybody.
Well, yeah, but we were going to discuss with the rest of the council after our Ways and Means meeting about the Civic Center levy and what our decision was, so that everyone was on board with that and understood where we were going, right?
Good. Why didn't you, you want to present that?
John. Okay, well, so we had discussed either adding, well, adding the Civic Center levy, that's an optional levy for us to add to this year's budget. And our final decision out of Ways and Means, or our recommendation, is that we do not add that at this point, that the lease agreement with the Civic Center is up in the end of June, correct? So July 1st would be a new lease agreement. And what we determined is that currently, the lease states that all repairs and maintenance are done by the center and not by the city. And so the center is expressing that they cannot pay those bills or cover those maintenance fees. And so we need to look at different options for that, since it is a city-owned building, and how we can potentially explore that. But Ways and Means felt that at this point, with the lease agreement that was in place, we wanted to honor that and have it start exploring different options where we would put a new lease agreement in place and potentially pass a levy or look for other funding vehicles that we can use to help cover those maintenance costs if the public and the council so chooses to do so. So...
Good, well stated, thank you.
About covered.
Very nice.
And I'll just mention that this subject came up at our work session in January where, you know, we did talk about our long-range commitment to the piece of property into the building, which is, you know, a very large thing to manage. At the time, we wrote our first contract, we had just taken on a very big responsibility to purchase the building, and we borrowed money to do that. We're about halfway through those bonds. But it does remain that this is a big part of our responsibility, so it's when that contract is reviewed and renewed again in July, that something be taken into consideration. It just came to our attention that the state does allow within the budget to, or, I'm sorry, within the levy structure that there is. And what is the actual name of that, Jessica?
It is called the operation, I'm sorry, rent, insurance, and maintenance of Civic Center.
No, it's actually the operation and maintenance of a city-owned Civic Center.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was...
Operations and maintenance of a city-owned Civic Center. So there is a mechanism to fund it that way. And Ways and Means made their decision not to recommend that at this point in time, but I guess there will be some further discussion on that before we review the next lease.
What's the cap on that levy? Is there one?
It's 13 and 1/2 cents.
13 and 1/2 cents, which...
Which generates $39,000 a year, is all.
Yeah.
So we'll be looking for, you know, just...
Another source of funding.
Different options and what's out there, and Ruston's planning to prepare what the needs really are, and so that we can think about it a little bit more and not be so rushed to a decision, and potentially have some more public input and feelings on what the taxpayers would like us to do.
Okay, thank you. Anything else in your report, John?
No, they've done a good job, thanks.
Move on, Mike. You know, you just say...
Melanie.
Melanie, okay, great.
Really, at this time, if there's any questions on the projects that are going on, it is a little shorter, mainly because it's really cold and nobody's constructing anything right now. I will mention that Michael, Hallie, and I worked together this last week to put together a grant application. Several months ago, Rec Task Force and the Parks and Rec Committee met to discuss the safe travel to and from the new rec facility, especially with the pool getting moved there. Different ideas were tossed around, and this was the first grant opportunity that we found to fund some of those improvements. So what Michael and I worked on was a grant application through Blue Zones.
Wellmark Foundation.
Wellmark, thank you. And what we requested for was sidewalk on the north side of Jefferson from 6th to 9th to provide a connector from the south and the east portions of town up to 9th Street and keep the traffic, keep the pedestrian off of Jefferson and onto sidewalks. So let's hope that that comes through. We'll know in May.
From just 6th Street to 9th Street on the north side?
Yes. That would allow pedestrians to cross at 7th and at 9th at a stop sign.
The reason, yeah, the reason I asked that was that 9th, there is sidewalk on the south side at 9th that continues on to the west.
Yep.
Why would the logic be to have the sidewalk on the north side, which isn't contiguous with the south side sidewalk, and not just have a crosswalk at 9th Street itself to go to the north toward sidewalks are as well?
Jefferson stops at, the traffic on Jefferson stops at 7th Street. Also, at 9th Street, there's enough of a hill there that, without putting in flashing beacons or something else, I felt like 7th was a better place for people to stop because, or to cross, because all of the traffic is stopped.
Right, that's a forward stop.
So there is definitely more investigation into all of the sidewalks in the area, improving just the city as a whole in connectivity. But for the 25,000 that this grant was able, or that we applied for this, with this grant, we thought this was a good way to, I guess, get a start.
Get started.
Melanie, there's a tunnel in front of the Roosevelt Building, isn't there?
Yes.
And that's in good shape?
Um, I, no.
No, it's not going to be reopened until soon.
No.
It's closed now. I'm sorry. Sidewalk on Jefferson, coming west from 6th on the north side, that extends about halfway down the block. So we were thinking to connect that all the way over to 9th Street.
Yeah, I just, it's not, of course, is what I was thinking about. I was just trying to get in terms of why you would want one side versus the other when you were talking about contiguous sidewalks, and we're already out there from 6th Street heading to the west already. And I understand the logic behind having a crosswalk at a designated four-way stop intersection because it's controlled better with the stop signs. And since it is at an area where you can see adequately from all directions for someone crossing, it is a safer alternative than what 9th Street would be at the top of the hill. But I just, my mind thinks in terms of construction, what it would take to do a sidewalk on the north side of the street past Power Wagon, right there, kind of brings concern.
On the north side, there's less drives there as well, and the distance wasn't that much difference between the north and the south sides. So that's why we went with the north side. I will say that this, we wouldn't, we won't know until May whether we receive this grant for Andy and all of the public, but just making sure you paid attention this way. Until something gets constructed, we really encourage pedestrians to go from 6th Street to Washington, and then use Washington to access the park and rec. That's as well, that's got controlled intersections and crosswalks. So we really encourage the public, the bicyclists and the pedestrians, to use that route for the pool this summer until we can get something else constructed.
And be careful crossing 9th, there are flashing lights, but the traffic doesn't stop.
It doesn't stop, yep.
Okay, thank you, Melanie. Counsel, our final item of business, our report from John Morsey about a property that we've had under discussion for purchase.
I asked just to have a couple of minutes. I didn't want to put you into a closed session. The single largest property acquisition on your sewer expansion project is pretty much a done deal. I wanted to try to get you a closing by the middle of March. To do that, coming out of closed session the last time, you authorized me to do some negotiation on a leaseback. Everything else about price and so forth was pretty much discussed, and we had a consensus. The leaseback turned into something with the low end from the owner, starting at around the $200 a month range, and I started around the $700 a month range. We had give and take at about $50 a crack. I stalled at 6, and the owner stalled at 3. I have agreed in order to get the abstract so I can get you a closing by the middle of March to split the difference at $450 a month for nine months of leaseback. I hope that's satisfactory with you, but it's gone like everything else on this, and I will just say that I think the last tooth has been pulled. We should be happy we're that far and that we won't have any more delays. So if anybody has any questions about that or wants me to put it into closed session at your next meeting, I'll offer you that opportunity now. But otherwise, I'm going to pull the trigger. We will bring you a resolution with a sale agreement attached to it at the next meeting and plan a closing that same week. I'll have a title opinion to your city administrator by the time you see the resolution.
That sounds great, John. Can you also update us on the sale of the Logan sale? Is that progressing too? Do we have a closing date?
I haven't got the abstract back yet, but we are doing what we're supposed to do. I'm also preparing an assignment of the entitlements to the Wentz. And I've talked to Tom Jimenez about that. He'll have some things to put into that. And I'm waiting for the appropriate representative from HUD in Des Moines to get back to us because they're the ones that actually need that so that the correct next owner receives the rent payments in due course right along each month. So, but we are on track.
Okay, great. Thank you, John, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, counsel, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Moved by Revolinsky, second by Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned.